Drafted School District Board of Education meeting to order. Ask everyone present to please rise for the President.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're going to go a bit out of order. This is our organizational meeting, the first meeting after the April elections. And we have two incumbent members returning to the board. And I would ask that you please stand so that we can administer the oath, Mark and Joe. And repeat after me. I think today's your right to. I state your name.
I'm Mark Kayler.
I'm Joe Mail.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member of the Grafton School District.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member of the Grafton School District.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much for your call to serve. So as we proceed with this organizational meeting for a new term for those that were newly elected and those that are still here, we need to elect a slate of officers. We'll start with the President. So the way this process works, we will call for nominations. We'll ask that after consideration nominations be closed, we'll vote on the motion to close nominations and then we'll vote on a member so selected. So for the Office of President, is there nominations on the floor?
Nominate Paul Orgy.
Second.
I move that nominations be closed.
We have a second to that motion. All right. No further nominations. Nominations are now closed. We'll vote on the nomination, the motion to close nominations. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we'll vote on the nomination for Paul Orgy for President. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Moving on to Vice President. Do we have nominations for Vice President?
I nominate Carrie Valls.
Second. Any further nominations? If none, I entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to close nominations, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. All those in favor of Carrie as Vice President, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Okay. Then I'd entertain a nomination for Board Clerk.
I nominate Joe Mail for Board Clerk.
Second. Any further nominations? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to close nominations for Board Clerk. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Joe Mail as Board Clerk, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Joe. Last but not least, I need a nomination for Board Treasurer. I nominate Mark Kayler.
Second.
Any further nominations? If not, I entertain a motion to close nominations. Second. Nominations are closed. All those in favor of the motion to close nominations, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All those in favor of Mark Kayler for Board Treasurer, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And congratulations. So in this organizational meeting, the new board members are seated. We have a new slate of officers. Congratulations and thank you to all of you and to every, well, the other members as well for your time. Next item then is the election of the CISA I representative. This is, we have not elected that position in the past. We have appointed that position. John has been our representative and John has agreed to stay on and serve as our CISA I recommendation. So seeing no objections, we will appoint John as our CISA I representative. Congratulations, John, and thank you for agreeing again. Schedule of the 2019-20 Board of Education meetings. We have typically reserved the second Monday of every month for committee meetings and the fourth Monday of every month for board meetings. I would propose that we continue in that schedule. Are there any objections? So seeing none, we'll continue with. We need a motion? Okay. Thank you. So.
I need a motion to continue on with the board meetings twice a month, once for committee and once for full board.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. And last but not least, in the organizational elements, our board committee assignments. Currently, we have four standing committees, the Curriculum Committee, the Finance Committee, Policy Committee, and the Marketing and Communications Committee. Right now, Curriculum Committee is chaired by Carrie with Joe and Jerry as its members. Finance Committee is chaired by Mark with myself and Jerry as members. The Policy Committee is chaired by Steve with Carrie and Joe as members. And the Marketing and Communications Committee is chaired by Joe with Carrie and John as members. I've not heard anyone wishing to make a change. I think there's good momentum in each of those committees. There's a lot of work yet to be done, for instance, in Policy Committee. And I would recommend, hearing nothing to the contrary, to hold the committee membership in assignments as they're currently assigned. Any objection or concern? All right. Well, then that will be our slate of committees. I also did hear that the Village has appointed new membership into the School Liaison Committee. That's a committee that has been in existence for a number of years, but has mostly been on an ad hoc basis as issues arise. I think that perhaps with a change at the Village level in the committee membership, we might want to consider getting more engaged with the Village, especially as we look to the future for the district. So at this point, I would ask if you're interested in serving on that committee, that you send a note to me and that we will then appoint members to that committee. So if you're interested in serving on that committee, it has been more of an ad hoc committee. I think that we should make it a standing committee. Again, its meeting time would be dictated by the pace and the nature and extent of agenda items that may be pertinent to both the Village and to the School District. So if you're interested, send me a note and then we will make an assignment to that committee. Jeff, any other committees that you can think of? All the other ad hoc committees are now done?
Sounds great. Yes. Thank you.
I think we're set. All right. The organizational matters are complete and we will go now to the public comments section. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to share comments?
I am here tonight representing the Grafton Education Foundation. We try to come to each meeting with a different representative to kind of tell the board members and everyone in attendance what's going on with the Grafton Education Foundation. Upcoming events. Our Color Blast is coming, sponsored by Port Washington State Bank. It'll be held June 4th on the Grafton High School track. The entry fee for students is $8 and it's really open to people of all ages. I really don't see anybody here that's too old to participate.
And if you're not familiar with the Color Blast, it's about a one-mile course that you
can run or walk around the school grounds. The shirt that we provide is white, other than the Color Blast insignia on the front. And the participants walk or run around this course. And at three different stations along the course, we've got people from the organization that are throwing color packets at those that are participating, red, orange, yellow, and blue. And by the time the students get through, in fact, some students even go through a station more than once. So when they go home, generally a parent will say, you know, I'll get that in the wash right away. And the student starts, no, that's not going in the wash. It's going under my bed. I'm wearing it tomorrow. They're very proud of that shirt with all those colors on it, and that's the whole purpose of the Color Blast. Second thing to talk about is grants. The primary mission of the Grafton Education Foundation is to give grants to teachers and staff in the classrooms of the Grafton School System. Grants started in 2011. In that year, we awarded $12,060 to Grafton students, Grafton teachers and staff. And each year since then, we've been awarding grants. Last year, we gave eight grants totaling $63,947.45. Our eight-year total of grants to the faculty of the Grafton School District is $257,537.53. This year, we've got 11 applicants. They are being evaluated as we speak. We have certain criteria. We really fund things in the classroom. We're not buying soccer uniforms. We're buying things in the classroom. There's very strict criteria and it's being awarded, and not every applicant gets a grant. Those 11 applications that have been submitted this year are for a total of $71,261.88. We'll know at the beginning of May who is going to be awarded a grant. We contact the principals of the buildings that are going to get a grant, and they know the prize patrol is coming. And we have a gigantic check printed for the recipient. And we kind of storm into the classroom, unannounced. And generally, we have a guy with a horn blasting his way. And also, a grant comes. Have you ever been to a parade or seen anything we do? We've got a costume of a green apple. And when we first got that costume years ago, we had a contest of all the schoolchildren, asking them, you know, what would be a good name for this costume? And we had 46 suggestions. And since we give grants, we thought the suggestion of Grant would be a good one. And so Grant is in the parades in Grafton. Grant comes into the classroom for the prize patrol. The final thing to talk about is, we are in the very, very preliminary discussions with Educator of the Year awards, some kind of an award for Educator of the Year. We're not really sure where this is going, but we're talking about that. We don't know what the scope is going to be. It undoubtedly, I don't know, it'll be this year or next year for the first time, but that's something that's on the table that we're talking about. This is kind of a significant year for the Grafton Education Foundation. Later this year, we'll be 10 years old. In 2009, eight people started the Grafton Education Foundation. This year, there are 28 people involved. And of those 28, there are only three from the original group. So thanks for this. Anybody have any questions? So thanks for this opportunity to give a report.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much for sharing the information and certainly to you, I believe, and I'm certain one of the founding members and one of the still three and the other 25 members that are new for the work that you do on behalf of the district. It is, it's very much appreciated.
I should add, most of those 25, I think, you guys have known them.
Any additional public comment for this evening? All right. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items, the approval of the minutes from March 25th and the statement of receipts and expenditures for March of 2019. Motion for those items.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and the statement of receipts and expenditures.
Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Superintendent's report, Jeff.
Yes, we have a number of recognitions that we want to make tonight. And first, we're starting off with one of our juniors, James Dempsey, who achieved a perfect score on the ACT. At the February 20th, all juniors across the state taking the ACT, he achieved a perfect score on that day. And less than 1% of all students who take the ACT actually achieve a perfect score. James had a little more pressure on himself because during the practice ACT, he got a perfect score on that. So, you know, lightning doesn't strike twice, except in this instance, when then on the 20th, he was able to achieve a perfect score on that day. James has been a student with us since kindergarten, so he is a product of our system. He actually had Ms. Wild as a teacher. And so it's great to see her retiring and he's here being recognized during that time as well. He's challenged himself with a very rigorous course load. So we think of like looking at his course load, the AP classes that he's taken, the advanced placement classes, he took two as a sophomore. He's taking five, six, if you count econ, is two currently. So out of a seven-period day with a zero hour, he's also taking zero hour. This is a student who's challenged himself tremendously to do this. He's worked hard at it and is really, we want to make sure that the board recognizes him and sees someone. We think of a perfect score as a state championship. If we look at athletics or fine arts or anything that may be in the academic world, this is the best that it gets. And it's a rare, rare to have a student achieve this recognition. And we want to make sure James is able to see the board and have the board be able to congratulate him and have our whole community congratulate him. We're finalizing our newsletter that goes out to our whole community and we have James on the front page of that with that surprise, that exciting announcement in that way. So James is the man of the hour. We want to make sure we recognize him. So James, why don't you come to the mic so we can recognize you?
Well, I just wanted to express my gratitude toward the board and toward the School District as a whole. As Dr. Nelson mentioned, I've been part of the Grafton School District for my entire academic career, really, since kindergarten. And I certainly would not have been able to score as highly as I did without the guidance of my teachers and everyone in the district. So just wanted to pass that on to you guys as well.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire board, you know, congratulations for your personal accomplishment, which is absolutely remarkable, but for the representation that you provide for the entire district and the aspiration that you provide for others that may look to follow in your footsteps. It is a tremendous honor, well deserved, and I'm certainly, a lot of hard work and hours put into earning that 36. So congratulations again and thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. We do want to congratulate you and we're proud of you and the work that you're doing and wish you well as you look ahead. Any thoughts and plans for what the future holds for you at this point?
Well, yeah, I plan on pursuing a degree in computer science, hopefully. I have also been looking at like math as a possible major, statistics, and then various skills in engineering, but computer science is the main one right now. And yeah, we'll see where that goes hopefully.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for coming. And then as I mentioned, we also have sort of a bittersweet. We go from extreme happiness to some bittersweet as we look at recognizing staff members who have been in our district for a number of years. So we have four staff members that are retiring this year. Linda Bender, who's been with us for 27 years, Molly McCabe with eight years, Claire Wyden with 18 years, and Mary Beth Wild of 12 years. Linda is our Director of Food Services, sorry, I almost said Student Services, the Director of Food Services. Molly is one of our physical therapists. She's our physical therapist and works with our students. Claire is a high school math teacher and has taught a number of different classes for us at the high school. And Mary Beth Wild has been a Title I math specialist and is our fifth-grade teacher. And each of them has served as great role models in my three years here. I've had very positive interactions with all of them. I know their reputations are ones that do reach out to every student every day in their roles as leaders in our district. And although we appreciate their years of service, we want to recognize them that way, they will be missed. And we want to recognize them during this time. So we have a, we have a plaque for them and we also have, we worked to get a apparel item from the Grafton School District that we would give to them as well. So we would ask ladies that you would come forward and have the board recognize you in that way. And board, please, if you come out here and take a picture with Dr. So I have for Linda Bender, it says, each plaque says the same thing. With sincere appreciation and gratitude to Linda Bender, on the occasion of her retirement, the Grafton School District gratefully recognizes your 27 years of service to the students and community of Grafton. And then your Grafton School District plaque that you chose. So thank you, Linda. Congratulations. And then Molly, it says the same thing. On occasion of your retirement, the Grafton School District gratefully recognizes your eight years of service to the students and community of Grafton, as well as a particular apparel item. So thank you, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And Ms. Wild, it says, on the occasion of your retirement?
Out of line.
The Grafton School District gratefully recognizes your 12 years of service to the students and community of Grafton. So thanks for making it.
Thank you. Thanks.
And Claire? On the occasion of your retirement, the Grafton School District gratefully recognizes your 18 years of service. So congratulations and we bless you well.
Thank you very much.
So ladies, why don't you have you come over here, be in front of the board and have the board as your backdrop. We'll try and get a picture of you.
This is official.
This is, yeah.
Walk away with the shirt. It's done.
You can always tear a special letter. I've said that to you, for the record.
All right. We'll just get up here. Thank you.
So ladies, I don't know if you have some words that you would like to share? Not required at all.
I'm going to do it, just because that's kind of my style. So I thought about like standing up here and looking at people that I've known over the years, and 12 years isn't 27 by any means, but one really inspiring sight tonight was seeing James and just remembering back to when he was in fifth grade. But there were some, there's some words that kind of resonate in my brain. And one of them, it was a year that we did a book study with Jeff Marnika. And it was, we got shirts and it was about, we had a speaker for, I can't remember his name, so don't ask me. Maybe it'll come to you guys. Diana, I'm counting on you. But it was a book that we read or a speech we read and the shirt that we got said, enjoy the ride. And I really truly enjoyed the ride that I've had for 12 years. I've been doing a lot of different things, primarily fifth grade, but I look back at that and I have enjoyed the ride. And Michael, to you as well, for my last year here, it's been a really bumpy ride for a lot of us, but it's, it's part of the ride. So kind of just makes my thoughts. And to be part of a blue ribbon school was also extremely proud moment for me. So thanks, you guys, for having me and letting me speak my mind when maybe I put my foot in my mouth a few times, but I am truly, you know, grateful for everything you guys did. So.
Thank you. Everyone else is going to pass? Can we get a picture of just the four of you as well, actually, before you sit down? Can I get a picture of just the four of you? Would you mind? Would you care what I mean? Yeah, bring your, yeah, bring your plaque. Bring your plaque. Bring your plaque, please. Joe, can you take a picture of them really quick? And I'm going to take one with my phone, actually. I don't understand. Yeah. I don't understand. It's not in front of the light. Okay. I don't know if I'm talking. What's his brother? What you like, what you like forward? I want to find her. Too much. So we appreciate their years of service and we wish them well and hope to see them back in our schools, coming back and visiting us and potentially even subbing or doing something like that as we look ahead to that. Maybe not. And then this is just after our last board meeting, we were recognized as a 2019 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the NAMM Foundation. So this is something that is a national award that is recognized because of our district's commitment. It's not, it's not an individual school, but all of our schools being recognized in this way. We have some banners that are being placed in each of our schools, not banners, they are.
Posters.
Posters, thank you. They're not banners. They're posters that will be up in each of our schools, recognizing it in that way. So it's a national award signifying our support for the fine arts and appreciate our music teachers and the work that they do to help our students be well-rounded. And it's a great recognition for our district. So I want to make sure we congratulate everyone that's involved in that way. And then, and then also, as we think of the whole child, so we think of James receiving a perfect score on the ACT, we think of the music award, and then we also have the last two pieces where students are being recognized for other things. And so this is a, congratulations to Ms. Stilo and her students Dana Lemke, Ava Govick, and Kaylee Luick. They've been selected to compete in the 2019 Whipping Up Wellness Wisconsin Student Chef Competition Cookoff. It's basically like the Top Chef Junior competition or Top Chef, if you watch that. Their team name is The Blondies. And they are cooking their sweet potato lasagna rolls on Thursday, May 16th at Madison College. They have to scale it to 48 servings. They have to do it here at the high school and get students to take a survey of, a taste test survey that they have to do. They have to then, when they go to Madison, they have to prepare six to eight servings of their dish within a two-hour window. They have to give six dishes to the judges and then additional servings are shared with other cook-off teams. When they show up, they get all their ingredients. They have to give a detailed list of the ingredients. They're all at their cooking station. No food can be prepared beforehand. They give a brief presentation of the dish. They have to talk about the dish that has introduction to team members, description of the dish, explanation of dish creation, and the student taste test results. And then they, it should be about 10 minutes. And then, then the judges ask questions about it and they get evaluated on taste, appearance, presentation, originality, and student appeal. This was something that we haven't, we haven't entered in the past, but because we have a new class coming up next year with our Advanced Foods and Restaurant Management class, Brenda had thought this would be a great year to like have a team compete. And so they entered it. It's the only team that entered and they were selected to be a finalist. Their recipe gets shared across the state with other food service people, so they look to see can they mass produce it for a district or for a school in that way. So it's a pretty cool recognition for them, a great opportunity for them. They had to look at AP testing, it's during AP testing, and fortunately, no one's taking an AP test on that day, so they're able to, all three of them are able to make it. And so we want to wish The Blondies good luck as they, as they go forward in that way. And then also, we had our FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America students, Shantano Shadari, Sophia Skolman, which I believe Mr. Skolman knows her, and Brandon Cern and their advisor, Sandy Giuliani. They qualified for nationals by placing fourth at the state conference. They will head to San Antonio this summer and so an opportunity for them to continue to develop some of their leadership skills and be involved with some really great opportunities for leadership. And we want to congratulate those students and Sandy on that recognition and wish them well as they move on to San Antonio. And with that, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to policy committees or committee reports. First, the policy committee from April 1st.
Yes, we met April 1st. We had a full agenda. The agenda included a discussion that we had on the Administrative Recommendation for Policy 2260 on Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity. We also had discussion regarding the Ola Policy Update 28.1, a second reading on the Ola Policy Series 2000, which is the program. And then we had a second reading as well as we broke up the 5000 series, which is around students. We had a first reading on the first half, excuse me, a second reading on the first half and a first reading on the second half of those policies, as well as we had a first reading of Series 7000, which was on property. Our next meeting is going to be May 13th. We will have a second reading around the second half of 5000 series for students. That's 5464 through 5870. There will be a second reading of Series 7000, which is around the property. And then we will do a first reading of Finance 6000 and Operation 8000. And once we get that, there will have been a first reading through all of the policies after the May 13th. after the May 13th meeting.
In the home stretch, from the Policy Committee perspective. All right, any questions for Steve? All right, thank you. Carrie, the Curriculum Committee met on April 8th.
We met on April 8th. We went, it was a brief meeting, but an in-depth meeting on Agenda Item F for tonight. Went through the high school science textbooks, for a new textbook for ancient chemistry, biology, and as well as environmental science, and the committee is recommending all of approval for all three. And we also went over tonight's Agenda Item G, approval of a new high school engineering curriculum, in particular, a new course, Project Leads Away, for engineering, starting for this upcoming fall. And the recommendation from the committee was to go ahead with that. And we meet on May 13th as well.
All right. Any questions for Carrie? Sign on, and we'll move on to the Acuity Sponsorship Agreement for GHS Competition Gymnasium.
And before I do that, I should say, and I've said this to the Dempsey's beforehand, you're welcome to leave, and I think our teachers are in the same boat that they knew that, so you're welcome to stay, but I should have said that, he probably has homework to do. If I was taking five AP classes, I would have a lot of homework to do. He may not. But, but yes, we are excited to move forward tonight with, bring to the boards, for the boards' approval, an Acuity Sponsorship Agreement for our competition gymnasium. So, if we backtrack three years ago with our first referendum, there was a discussion of athletic facilities that were included in that referendum, and when that failed, there was listening sessions that were held, and one of the prevalent themes was that athletic facilities should not be funded in the referendum, it should be funded through other, other means. With that occurring, we've started trying to reach out and start developing relationships with various organizations, and to look at sponsorships. The Policy Committee had worked on policies that would relate to that, and through our work, we've been working with Acuity to look at our gymnasium as being officially named the Acuity Gymnasium. There is a sponsorship agreement for 25 years. The agreement comes with a $425,000 donation. We have worked with our educational foundation to, to work with us in that way. The agreement will serve, we'll have an indoor sign in our gymnasium that will signify it as being the Acuity Gymnasium. There will also be an exterior sign that we will develop along with, we'll get village approval, but we'll be changing out the sign that currently, not the, not the digital sign that's right outside our district office, but the one that is to the east of the high school, off of 60, that will then give a signature arrow that will say Acuity Gymnasium, and show where the high school is, off of 60 there. So we are excited to begin working with the village to get that sign approved, but we're, we have Adam Norlander, who's been working with me, and with through us, throughout this whole process from Acuity. And so we have tonight, we have a check in the amount of $425,000 that goes to the Educational Foundation, which then makes sure that we are using for the contract. It's not for a specific thing, it's for our facilities that we would utilize in our, in what the board would see fit. And after we review Policy 851, this is in line with that policy. It's a company that we feel comfortable supporting, having that recognition in our, on our gymnasium, and something that we would be sponsoring in that way. And so we are bringing forward to the board for approval of this agreement.
All board members have in front of them a copy of the agreement, so I would entertain a motion to accept and adopt this agreement as presented.
Second.
All right, is it a motion, and it's seconded? Is there any discussion regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Adam?
So we'd like to take a photo opportunity, so if the board would like to come forward and gather around.
Yeah, well, and on behalf of, on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, certainly, thank you for the generous donation and for the partnership and the sponsorship of our gym. It is very much appreciated, and, you know, we look forward to that 25 years of name as gymnasium, the Acuity Gymnasium. So, thank you very much.
Bob, you represent, it looks like Mr. Govick is not here. So you'll be our past president, representing the Education Foundation.
Thank you.
That's our final picture.
So, moving on, we'll move to Item E, the Personnel Report.
Um, D.
Ah, D. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I missed D.
Yep.
All right. The Grafton Education Foundation Fundraising Event Exemption Request.
So, we received a request from the Educational Foundation, that they are interested in exploring their annual fundraising event, which is formerly the Super Bowl, in the new GHS Commons area. They'd love to bring the event back to Grafton, and currently, there isn't a venue in the community that can hold a group their size, so they are asking the board, excuse me, to give GEF an exemption to allow alcohol for this event. If granted an exemption, alcohol would only be permitted in designated areas within the Commons for a two-to-three hour time period. The GEF would be proud to showcase the Commons for this event. One idea was to highlight all the updated areas and the equipment, et cetera, that GEF has funded through gifts and grants over the years. They would have tours limited to the first hour of the event with no food or beverage allowed. Other ideas would include having live music, possibly a sweet taste of Grafton, local restaurants providing desserts for tasting, a live silent auction, 50/50 raffle, and more. They feel that there is so much positive momentum right now in our school community, so what better place to support our schools than in our school? And so Erin Schumacher is here as one of the three. Is it three of you?
Three.
There's multiple. There's a lot. There's multiple people that are, that are, that are working on this, and she is here on behalf of the Educational Foundation, but this is a request that they brought forward for the board to consider. So, per board policy, I don't have the number off the top of my head, we don't allow alcohol on school property, so that's, thus their request for an exemption to that policy.
You said, wonderfully, I was just here to represent and answer any questions that anybody had. I mean, I don't present much to add. These guys, we've really liked having the event at the Commons, because through this last Super Bowl, Lisa and I both met with Mr. Gaines and a couple of other teachers, and I was shocked at how proud they were to showcase their room, show us what GEF brought them. I ran into my sister-in-law, and she showed me pretty much the entire top four. She was so excited to showcase all of this, and I did talk to her as a teacher, and was like, how would you feel about having people mill out? And she's like, well, I wouldn't like people bringing food and drinks, and so that's why we would scale that back, because absolutely not, wouldn't feel allowed. But she thought it would be really cool, because there are so many people that haven't been seen in the Commons, and now that we're building a hoxnet, that would be amazing to showcase as well. Also, we investigated other local areas, like the River Room, which won't house enough people. We looked at the River Club, which I feel a lot of people won't drive to. We tried to change the event this year, and we just couldn't find a place that would support what we needed, and I know from talking with the people that ran last year the Super Bowl, it kind of sounded like that has, that time has passed. So, if you are willing to entertain that, I know that we would host a wonderful event. It would not be in January again. I need a little bit of time to actually plan this one. So, we were looking at fall, so that we wouldn't interfere with other fundraising. But I'm here also to answer questions, because I'm sure that there are a lot of questions. Can't answer a lot of specifics. I know we wish we had done it, and we're trying to get in touch with some of the parents and administration there, but I haven't seen that from them, and how it went, and if they had a positive experience with it, but I'm working on getting information on that. So, like I said, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer what I can. We're still very early in the planning process, but it's one option that we're looking at.
Thank you, Erin. So, the request is before the board for this exemption. Thoughts, comments, questions?
I like the idea of it being obviously back in Grafton. I love showcasing the schools. I am nervous about the alcohol, only because if it's held in the Commons, no matter if it's Friday or a Saturday night, you frequently have students who are here for various athletic events or student events, and I hate the idea of alcohol and high school students in the same space. Even if it is tightly regulated, it's a lot of, it's a risk factor for the school to have students and alcohol mix. I don't know the legality of, like, selling alcohol, or, you know, like, I don't, meaning, I don't know if you need, like, a liquor, if you can just sell, because it's not, we're not, you're just not providing alcohol, you're selling alcohol.
Right. You would have to bring a third party in. I know that much. And honestly, I didn't even think about having the gymnasium and other areas open. I kind of was hoping that we could just shut it down to students, because it would be an invite-only, kind of, you buy your tickets ahead of time, can't buy tickets at the door. We know who's showing up, but I haven't looked also into the legality part or insurance. I don't even know who would look into that, so, like I said, early stages. Kind of wanted to make sure that I'll go before we really, really have to give those out there.
I'd like also the fact about coming to Grafton, and the space is great, you like to do amazing work with the GEF, and I think it sounds like a nice plan. I'm just opposed to having alcohol on school premises. That's my view. I think sometimes, even though there's, you know, you don't think people will necessarily, you know, overdo it, it's just always that potential, and if we do approve something like this, it could be, it's the perception that I would be worried about, too, with Grafton and our school district, if something were to happen. But, I mean, I think if there was no alcohol, I think it would be a great place to do, you know, your tasting, or taste of Grafton, or things like that. Plus, it might also open up to other groups wanting to come in and, you know, get a one, is it a one-time exemption?
That's what they're asking for.
We have a one-time exemption for a year. And we were thinking about that, too, because there are other, other organizations that might want to, thinking back on it.
Sure.
The only reason we were really thinking that it would be a feasible option for us is because we do support all of the schools, like, the entire district, but that is, that is a valid concern.
And that's what my concern was, I'm not sure about that.
I agree. I'm worried about giving them an exemption, and then other organizations that are part of the schools, supported by the schools, also making similar requests, and now it's a multitude, maybe not a multitude, but other requests coming from other organizations that were put in a position in the district to decide, which I don't like being put in that position. So I, yeah, I just, I'm uncomfortable with the alcohol and setting that precedence for this organization and potentially others.
I'm less, I'm not really concerned about the alcohol or other organizations. I mean, save for the liability issues. I mean, you know, if that gets worked out satisfactorily, then I guess I don't have concern about addressing one-off requests. I mean, I, we're looking at an exemption, so I would want to make it based on this group's, not what could maybe someday come forward, because we could say yes here and then no to another one.
I guess my other, my other comment, though, is, is we also put a requirement on our student athletes and other students and other organizations to remain drug and alcohol free, and this kind of, in my mind, goes against what we're expecting our students to do, and we're condoning it on their premises, too.
Can I ask something that I didn't want to add, and public comment, because it's a little bit vague? The Booster Club president, you'll be right behind them with this request, because we've held cornrows at the park for 60 years, which is our, and we've held it there for this reason only. So, that's one organization that will be directly behind them with this request. And if we put it past the PCGs as well, they spent $450 to hold their trivia night at Ozark, I mean, Booster Club will be right behind them. Which also spends $30,000 per year in this building, in addition to over $10,000 in scholarship.
Other thoughts? Questions? And I share the concerns. I share the concerns relative to establish policy that says no alcohol on the grounds and students and staff to not be in possession of alcohol, both of which an event like this would violate. And I do think that there will be additional requests. I mean, the Booster Club, tailgate parties, I mean, lots of organizations that would like to tap into this as an opportunity. I see two options here. Either we request more information, namely legality and other things, or if a motion would be in order, if anyone's so inclined to so move relative to the exemption request, entertain that, too. But I'd need to get some direction. Is it more information that we're leaning towards, or is someone prepared to make a motion? It's one or the other.
I mean, I'd like more information on the, I mean, I might be the only one open to the idea.
And honestly, my feelings will not be heard either way. I'm trying right now, I, I want it to work, because I think it will make more money, but so, I would, I would love for it to be able to showcase the high school, but my feelings will not be heard if you guys say you're not comfortable, it doesn't sound like...
Well, we've, we've heard from four, that, that would appear that they're not in favor of granting such an exemption, so, again, I've heard from one that would...
I'm willing to make a motion to not grant the exception for alcohol on the premises for the Grafton Education Foundation's event.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion? A motion has been made, a motion has been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the motion passes, six to one. Thank you very much for the, the request, and certainly for all of the work that is done to put on the Super Bowl. It is good work, it's a great event, and, you know, it just doesn't fit in with the policies and the direction that we look to espouse for our students and for our staff. So, you know, we wish you certainly all the best. If we can help in any other way, we're certainly here to help you in that regard.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to now, the Personnel Report.
Yes, so we have some resignations that are for the end of this year, as we look ahead to next year, as well as some new hires for next year, and then we have some informational pieces. So we would ask the board to approve the resignation of Amy Eben, kindergarten teacher at Woodview Elementary School, Elena Sauerland, first-grade teacher at Woodview Elementary School, and Michael Weldon, physical education teacher at Grafton High School. And we would also ask for next year to approve the hires for Adon Burgess, fifth-grade teacher at Woodview, Susan Easter, fourth-grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary, and Hope Shane, third-grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary. And then informational, we have hired Carrie Whizzing as part of our nutrition services staff, Catherine McCauley, library aide at the high school, and Kara Hirschen, a special ed aide at Kennedy Elementary.
All right, so we'll take these in pieces. First, do I have a motion? First, do I have a motion to accept the resignations as presented? Any discussion relative to those resignations? We accept them with regrets. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes now to the new hires. Fifth grade teacher, Adan at Woodview, Susan, fourth grade teacher at Kennedy, and Hope, third grade teacher at Kennedy, who have a motion to accept those hires. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Thanks, John. F, approval of the high school science textbooks.
Diana will walk us through that. Carrie had talked about that earlier through our curriculum committee meeting. Turn it over to Diana.
Right. All right. So, we had a curriculum committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Geiger and Melissa Stoudt, yep, I was thinking Melissa, Mrs. Stoudt, both came and spoke about both the process and the textbooks that they were recommending. So, just to remind the board and the public that the process includes a team of teachers working through a rubric or a set of criteria where they rate or score on the basis of things like readability, relevance of materials, bias, effectiveness of technology components, et cetera. They look at three, if available, three different textbooks. They, the process in which they've determined that that textbook needs to be replaced. Both Bob and Melissa talked about the, that each textbook was, I think they said 12 years old. The A P, in particular, A P Chemistry, had some new requirements that the current textbook did not meet for the course. So, then they come to consensus on the one book that they would like to move forward. They meet with myself. Mr. Mantai was part of that meeting. We talked through their, their reasoning behind that, their rationale, how many books we would need, what the number of students were, but also the technology components, and how would we best meet that one-to-one that's going to be occurring next, beginning next year. Special ed components, all of that was discussed, and then they brought forward the recommendations that we brought forward to you at the committee. So, I'm looking tonight to answer any last questions that the board might have and to move forward with the approval of the three textbooks. The biology and zoology and botany, that would be the same textbook for two different classes, A P Chemistry, and then environmental science. Are there any questions that you have that maybe weren't answered last time?
Any questions for Diana relative to these three high school science textbooks? The committee did a thorough job presenting them. All of the books had high marks relative to their internal scoring. So, seeing none, then entertain a motion to approve the high school science textbooks as presented.
Go move.
Second. A motion and a dual second. Carrie, do you have that?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Thank you.
Excellent. And the next one I'm really excited about, and that is, not that I wasn't excited about the science textbooks, I'm very excited about that as well, but, PLTW. So, we have the biomedical strand, as you know, that all four courses and over 100 students within those four courses, so it's very, very popular, and Fran Grant has really led the charge with that. In knowing how popular and how well-planned out PLTW is, we, as part of the curriculum cycle, began to look at our engineering strand at the high school. We are going to be in a cycle to look at this K-12, starting with the high school. We looked at what PLTW has to offer as far as high school courses, and saw a correlation between the current course that we have at our high school called Principles of Engineering and the PLTW course, Principles of Engineering. We had a team meeting with Mr. Mantai and Mr. Dodge and Mr. Gaines with a representative from PLTW, and then consultation with Ms. Grant, and really came to consensus that the PLTW curriculum component is much stronger, much more rigorous, much relevant for students, and we do think that it will increase the amount of students who are interested in the engineering courses at our high school. So, we would like to bring forward Principles of Engineering with PLTW as the curriculum, starting with next year's school year, open to students who are sophomore, junior, or seniors. Right now, I think we have 36 enrolled in that course.
Correct.
Which is a, a good number for, how many sections?
Two.
Two sections. And so, it would just be a curriculum change, it's not a new course, because we currently have that course. Along with that, following this decision, if it were accepted by the board, I will work with a team, including Mr. Mantai and Mr. Deering and relevant teachers, to come up with a three-to-five-year plan of what this will look like moving forward, so students have options after P O E and prior to P O E at our high school with PLTW as the curriculum. So, that's why I'm excited. So, I'm asking for approval of that, I guess.
All right. Are there any questions for Diana regarding the high school engineering curriculum changes as presented? All right. Then entertain a motion to accept the administrative recommendation regarding that engineering curriculum.
Second.
These, both of these have been approved by the curriculum committee, so all those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, of course, and it goes without saying thank you to you and to the entire team. I see Bob Geiger, Beth Unzia, Andy Hudson, Melissa Stoudt, Alyssa Bloom, and Nikki Schreiner.
Yes.
And then on the engineering side...
Kevin Gaines, Dodge, Mike Dodge.
And Fran Grant.
Mr. Mantai.
And Mr. Mantai. So, thank you all very much. Selecting the best materials comes with a lot of hard work by a lot of people that care an awful lot about what we're putting forth for our kids, so, much appreciated for all the hard work and effort.
Thank you very much.
Enhancing Our Future Steering Committee, next. Mr. Nelson.
Yes, so, we have, at the September 24th board meeting, the board approved formation of a superintendent-led steering committee called Enhancing Our Future to be responsible for facilitating the fundraising efforts for, for different projects that we have. One of those pieces, we see with our partnership acuity, but now as we start looking at our outdoor athletic facilities, we have a, a master plan, it's a high-level overview of our master plan, that the committee has reviewed and has approved to bring forward to the board to begin fine-tuning that process in that way. So, Carrie, if you can zoom in on that. What you'll see here is you'll see the stadium, so this is, the emphasis being on the stadium. And, yeah, so if you can zoom one more, maybe zoom out one, maybe zoom out one. That's perfect, that's good. So, you can see, I guess if you're looking over there, you're looking over there. Sorry, I'm standing in someone's way, so I apologize. But what you're seeing is, you're seeing our, our current existing building, which is our concession stand that's there, that holds our restrooms, and, and as you look at, if you look at an overview, or even as you pull into the driveway heading into district office, that, the, the line of sight immediately goes to that. So, it's a great line of sight with G E S gone, as you drive by now on 60, you immediately see that. But what has happened with G E S being gone is we do not have a fence now that makes our entry safe for people as they come into our stadium, doesn't allow us to search students with backpacks, visitors, whatever it may be, and so there's a safety component that we now miss. We used to have a controlled entrance, a controlled exit, that we've lost with G E S coming down. So, what this plan provides is it provides fencing that would go around, and that's what sort of comes around there, and it goes here, and it comes around up to here, and comes over to this area here, to a soccer entry. So, it's coming in, this is the drive, if you think of the parking lot that's right over here, people walk in, they come around the building, right now they're walking down and coming in. With the new setup that they're proposing, people would come on the existing drive, would come all the way over to here, come into the plaza entry in this way, and this would be the main ticket booth for all of our stadium events. At the end, this is a secondary entry that would be for emergency vehicles to be able to come down the drive, park here in this area here, the emergency vehicle parking, so if there is an accident, they're, they're accessible to people in that way. And this would also be something at the end of the game for visitors to be able to flow out that way coming back. So, it would allow more orderly exit, not everyone flowing through one area. The entry, we chose Point of Beginning as one of the three companies that had come in and presented to us. We chose them because they're known for their entryways. They're known for designing that. The designs that they showed us were far exceeding other companies that we've looked at. So, they're, they would develop an entryway that would allow multiple people to be able to check in this way, and then as the game ends, other gates to be able to open up as well, so more people could exit. But as they come in, it would be a, an entry point that we would be able to control, that provides safety for people as they're coming in, and it also adds a large, this is a little bit higher, so it's coming down, so it adds an entry area for people to be able to congregate. It adds a plaza area for us to be able to, if that, we wanted, we wanted that to be a, a selling thing, currently if the Booster Club's selling something, our kids are selling something, we're always, we're always seeing tables right here that are sort of packed in, and people are sort of squeezing by that. This allows either an area like that to be here, right now they have picnic tables that could go in this area, so there'd be extra seating that would go with that, that could also be moved over to here, but if there's, it would add more blacktop for us to be able to have congregational places for people to be able to stand that would go with that. So, it shows the fencing that then provides a safe access. It would come over to a soccer entry currently, people come all the way down to here, and then before they get into the soccer area, we have a table where someone greets you in that way. This would provide a soccer entry booth that would be, I'm assuming Mr. Moore would be a ticket booth, then, so people, as they're coming in, you'd see the fencing, fencing ties into the soccer entry, the fencing continues down and connects to our current fence that's down there, but this would be a soccer entry, that would be an entryway for people as they enter, you're coming down, and Carrie, if you can scroll that, there we go like that. And then we would be looking to add a, it probably would be the concession building, but it would be a restroom building. So, we're working at the Village now on getting what the details would occur. We'd get rid of that beautiful porch, John, that's there, I know you're laughing. That, that would be, would be a restroom slash storage, there's no storage right now for soccer to be able to utilize, that could be a, a large area, it could be a, a meeting room for the team to even have, be practicing on the soccer field, on the practice soccer field, be able to go in and, and do film or, or work in an area in that way, for that. So, with that, in order to, so, as part of the plan, it's, it's to bring turf to the stadium field, and what you'll notice is that it has a football, obviously, on here, but it also has soccer on here. And in order to have soccer be wide enough so we could host a playoff game, we need to move some of our field events out of these areas. So, what you'll notice is the triple and the long jump are moved over here, the pole vault is moved over here, shot and discus that are down here are now being moved over in this direction, and then some practice rings in this way. The reason why you have discus going this way is because of the elevation changes, as well as there's a fence there, so there's no liability concerns, we didn't want, first it was discussed going this way, but you have soccer going here. One of the things that we did discuss, Kevin Moore met with the track coaches, and this may be something that is moved down into this area here, into that area there, so it wouldn't be, wouldn't be affected if the practice soccer field, we were going to put up a, a fence that would not allow a ball to hit someone or something, but this could be something that would be done here. They like the high jump and the pole vault being closed, because everything is stored over here, and those, those, those mats that they, the pits, the pits that they have are very difficult to transport, and so to be able to take it on the track and around and on the blacktop over to here was a very easy thing, easily in, easily out. If it was moved over here, that still would be an acceptable thing for us to be able to do, but adding that blacktop allows mats to be able to move more easily than they currently are, and provides multiple areas for people to be able to practice. If we were to move the pole vault down to here, that would also maybe provide some more room for people to congregate during a, a big event, a big track meet that we would have there. So, you, you can see, this would also be something that we would mark, like lacrosse spots. We wouldn't mark, we wouldn't line it for lacrosse, but we would mark it with the points, so if we were to rent it out for lacrosse, then you could easily line that with temporary paint. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have all three, we wouldn't have soccer, football, and lacrosse lines on there to begin with, but it would be something that could be utilized in that way. So, so it gives you a broad overview of what this could look like. We see, we see the turf as being a huge advantage for, obviously, a football that's being used in that way, but also be a huge advantage for our F I A department, for our band, to be able to go out there and practice, for youth sports to be able to utilize it, for, in the springtime now with, with trying to get soccer and, and baseball and softball all doing something, and be able to have a synthetic service that they could utilize. It would help us with, if there's a rain, if it rains, soccer could move to the turf. If it was getting ready for the state tournament, you could move it to that area as well, because state tournament's always going to be on turf, or if you're playing in a regional game or a sectional game at M S O E, which is turf, you would have that, and we're looking for opportunities like that. Soccer wants to still remain on the natural grass, their desire is not to move all of their games to turf, but it would be an option. We wouldn't have rainouts anymore, and people that play soccer are tough, they don't usually quit unless it's, you know, unless it's snowing. So, this would allow us to be able to even push that off, right? Isn't that correct? Am I right, James? James said it. If it's lightning, you stop. That's true, they're, they're not stupid. So, you don't, you don't do it in lightning. I don't think you do traffic field in lightning either, that's probably a bad idea for all sports. But it really, it would truly help us in, we, we see this as being something as the next step for our athletic facilities as we look at the high school. And so, you'll also notice that it's broken down into three stages, so the background that gives you three stages. So, the first stage is our fencing around the entire facility. So, it's broken up into phases, so the first one is broken out by fencing, so you have entry fencing, entry, the secondary entry, the main entry, a walkway, the plaza piece that's broken out of that. That second part is, is really the track, replacement of the track. You remember last year, we resurfaced the track to buy us that five to eight years for the track. We knew that turf was something that we were going to be looking forward to, so we did not invest the money that we have currently set aside in our long-range maintenance plan to be able to do that. So, that's in, in phase two. So, at that point, you'd be looking at the track being replaced, looking at adding turf, and then the relocation of the field events in that phase two. Phase three is, would be that soccer restroom, storage, building, construction area, and then stage four, phase four is really scoreboards and lighting. And so, those are listed in phase two and three, but they're, they're zero numbers. So, those aren't included in those budget numbers. So, if you look at phase two and phase three, and you're like, oh, that includes scoreboards and lighting, it doesn't. That, that would be an alternate bid. We'd put it in that phase four, but it isn't zero-summed out on that, so I apologize. So, that's why you'll see scoreboard for football, sound system for football, flag pole, those that go together, stadium lighting, stadium for both soccer and football, that would tie into that. One of the things, as you start going through this and talking to Point of Beginning, they said, you know, the, the goalposts, you really need new goalposts. And we're like, well, our goalposts are, are really good, we don't, what's the problem? And they said, well, if you had soccer games on there, the new goalposts have a pin, actually you pull out and you spin it, because the, the way the goalpost is facing, you don't want it facing that way, you need it going the other way, so it doesn't interfere as you bring the soccer goals out. It's not an issue at all. And so, there's some modern things that we're like, well, that doesn't sound like a necessity, but actually will align with that, and that's why it's included in, in that phase. But those, that phase four has been pulled out, and, and I, I don't think the committee, as we looked at it, thought that it was going to be phase one, maybe it could have been A, B, C, D. I think we all agree that phase one is phase one, that's number one. The safety and security, getting it fenced in is truly phase one. The fundraising pieces of two, three, and four will be the things that will drive some of those other pieces. So, I think as our committee was discussing it, if someone were to come forward to say, we're to get multiple people that were going to be sponsoring a scoreboard, then the scoreboard wouldn't have to be, well, we're not going to do that until we would be able to move that forward in that priority list, if that makes sense. But as we, but phase one, the committee all agreed, that was the number one priority. But it, that gives you hopefully an overview, and it's a broad overview. This truly is, there's a lot of fine tuning to go with it. You know, Kevin had met last week with the track coaches, looking at those pieces, so some of the feedback that he got from that will be, will be passing on to Point of Beginning and getting feedback from them in that way, and, but we wanted to bring this to the board as we look at an overarching, long-range athletic plan. As I mentioned in my memo, this does not include baseball, softball, we've had a lot of discussions about baseball, softball, it doesn't include that. One of the discussions that we had at our committee level, though, was if we were to move forward with this plan and having... move forward with this plan, and having, if you can zoom out here just a little, up and scroll down please, and over. If we were to move forward this plan, this plaza area does not, and the practice field is really just to showcase how much space you have. Everyone can imagine what 100, it's hard to say 120 yards, but when I say a football field, you're like, oh, that's what 120 yards looks like. So it's just a visual, it would be something that the team may use. If you're getting ready to play a team that only has grass, you may go over there and practice in that area, in that way. But I gave you two examples of what Rattler had done for us last year, and it showcased that varsity baseball and varsity softball were moved to the high school campus, as well as a study that Point of Beginning had done in 2015 that showcased a different approach, but still having varsity baseball and softball that wouldn't interfere with any of this. And at the last time that we left it, the administration had recommended not having varsity baseball and varsity softball at the high school, but we wanted to make sure that if that were to be a decision the board would move to in the future, that this long-range plan doesn't interfere with that, with that idea.
So with that, I mean, I see in the information that you shared that this is discussion and/or action. Are there specifically what it is, what is it that you're looking for from the board tonight?
So we would love to have the board approve this overview of a master plan that will continue to bring back the fine details to the board for approval. So even the entryway, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what's been, this is what they're recommending, all those pieces. But in order to move forward with Point of Beginning, to begin looking at creating informational brochures, to create renderings of that nature, we need board approval for where those locations would be. So if the board were to say, you know, well, we don't like the idea of having, I don't know, it'd probably be hard to say no to that. But if you were to say, I don't like, I think it's a waste of money to have an entryway up here for soccer, if you scroll over, Cara, we think, you know, we think you should save $30,000 or whatever is budgeted in that area. So if this entry isn't here, and it's just way down here, then that's, we'd have to move forward with that idea. But as we look at it and talking to Kevin Moore, this would be a great location to do that. So we're, those are the fine things that, it's like the fine point that we just have broad ideas about. We aren't looking at replacing the current concession stand that's there. You know, ideally, that'd be great to remodel at some point, but we're looking at prioritizing one of those things, and that's why we prioritize having a restroom, storage area down there that, as we were at Point of Beginning, they can create some renderings that we could then approach various organizations and look for sponsorships or opportunities for donations.
Couple of questions. The secondary entry, is that literally just emergency vehicles, or is it a secondary entry for people coming from this lot?
We don't think we use it as that way. It would be a swinging door, be a swinging gate, so we could get, so it'd be easily accessible for Jamie's crew as well, because this is the, this is his maintenance area, so for him to get various things in, or for Kevin Moore to get the gator. This would be where the students, our athletes are entering, they're going onto the field. They would, this would be open, they would enter this way. So whether they're going to a football game, or a soccer game, or for practice, or whatever it may be, they may be, that may be open and then closed as they're coming in and out. We don't, I guess if it was a monster game, you know, we had some discussions about that, that maybe that would be staffed by someone, and you'd have people taking tickets and an officer standing there checking people as well. But that wouldn't be our intent. Our intent is to funnel everyone here. We talked about having this be a secondary entry and putting another...
Ticket booth.
Thank you. That's what I was like, we're, ticket booth right here, and we didn't see that as being the best use of funds.
Another question. The contours over on that track up to the north, is that reflective of where we're currently at? Because they moved all that fill up there? Do you know?
Jamie, I don't think it, is that, is that reflective? It is not, yeah. That's what I thought. I think this is the old, because this isn't part of their scope at all right now. We really, we've asked them to go from here over. And so I think this is an overlay of what they previously done for us back in 2015.
Well, I like the idea, the concept, and I like maintaining that open space for future options, be it softball, baseball, practice, whatever. I like the plan that gives us that flexibility to use that space, yeah, and determine that. And I like, you know, I think turf solves some problems and addresses some issues with playability and having games there all the time. I'm assuming that the team would use it in practices too, because as you're saying, you want to practice on what you play. Right, Mark?
And there'd be, unless it's lightning, there'd be options to do various things. And what we'd like to, care if you can bring it back, we do like, they have some ideas of some shrubbery and some, just really beautifying that area, but really making this like a focal point. So as you're coming into this driveway, because remember, this is, that driveway's lining up here, and you know, when our parking lot's done, all the parking's going to be going this way. So you're coming in, and this is your focal point. It really is, it'll draw your eye to it. Even if you're driving by on 60, those shrubs bring your eye to that focal point.
Any other questions?
So as an approval tonight, Jeff, is that for us just to go forward with phase one, or to move forward? Is this being the total master plan for everything?
So in my mind, it's really looking at the total master plan. I would say the total master plan, if the board would say, we would, I'd be happy to have that also be in agreement, that phase one is a priority. That was what the committee had said, because I think that's something that we should be looking at as a priority to raising funds, to immediately try and get something done for safety reasons. But at the minimal of getting an overarching approval for this drawing, so we can get some renderings. And that's what I'm saying, there may be some movement based on some of the feedback we got from the track coaches and so forth. There might be minor tweaks that go with it, but get some approval in that way.
And then the timeframe, as far as when you think we could, first started, you don't think it'd be for this fall? What is...
Jamie, even if we had the money right now, with, is with the worker shortage, would that be something that could be accomplished?
Phase one?
Yeah.
I believe that's part of phase one.
Yes. Okay. Possibly. Bless you.
Yeah, I think it is important to keep in mind and appreciate the whole notion of the public-private partnership. And the committee's charge, the steering committee's charge, is to not only identify the ideas, but then also to identify and articulate how it is that we're going to approach the public to generate funds for these projects, as we've taken these things outside of the referendum. So it's critical to have an accurate representation of what it is we think the product's going to be, within reason. I mean, the finer details notwithstanding, but an understanding of what the master plan looks like is important as you go to the community and others for generating funds, and sizable funds for the project. And I guess to say, you know, so if we approve it tonight, it's draft one of the master plan, it's the master plan?
Then we'd be building off of this.
Right.
Because, and there might too, we would be matching, so the fencing that would go around, probably from here and here, would all be black-coated fencing, right? And then these would, this would be more decorative fencing, because that's what your eye is being drawn to. But those are the types of decisions that we'll make. I mean, there's so much variance in turf, that there's so many price points that go with that. So those are, those are the fine details that we'll bring back to the board for approval in that way. But to be able to move forward with this master plan would be what the administration needs in order to move forward.
Any consideration or pushback from Point of Beginning or anyone? I mean, it seems like an awful long way to go for somebody who's parking on the east, and visitors with the stands in plain sight now have to walk across the top of the football field and get to the main entrance. I've done it before at other schools, and I understand.
We have neighbors to the north of us that you walk a long, long way.
Right.
To, on a dark path, there's a light hanging down, but like you walk around that school. I mean, there's, you know, there's, it is, we had the discussion, they saw no issue of bringing people here, because it is a security point you're bringing people to. It's, and it's not, and it really isn't that far. It really isn't that far. It's all relative. That was last year, when I saw Adam last.
Seventy yards, right?
Which was, if you're going to see it, then it might be a long way. That's true. So it's relative. But this doesn't, if that, the beauty of this plan is that if that were to become an issue for us, that doesn't preclude us from then adding something in the future.
Right.
Because the, you've sort of built a really good foundation to be able to do that. And we're talking about, how many times a year are you talking about needing that? And at that price point, as we look at priorities?
No, I agree with it, it just, it's something that catches the eye that, you're...
Yeah, I agree.
All right, yeah, I think you do, as to Paul's point, if you're going to start getting the pavement looking for a fundraiser, you're going to need the master plan, not just phase one approved.
Right.
You need the bigger picture.
Absolutely, yeah.
To make that clear. My other concern, I know we beat the, beat it down the path, was the softball, football, or softball, baseball, because that was something that we had talked about after the referendum past, that we would, priority-wise, it would be soccer, baseball, and softball. And now both are taking a backseat. But I think the turf on the football field gives us options that if we didn't do that, we don't have as many options.
Well, I'm not sure necessarily that they have to take a backseat. I mean, they've, they've taken a backseat at this point, because in July, and, you know, we didn't approve the administrative recommendation. So we can certainly charge administration with bringing that recommendation back. Or I, we didn't ask them, I went back and I reviewed the tapes over the weekend. We didn't ask them to gather any additional information relative to baseball and softball. We felt that we had all of the information that we need, or needed at the time. There was a concern relative to, is the, is the $800,000 that's been levied in '41 best used for athletics? Or are there some residuals from the referendum that need to be addressed? I mean, I think we need to get started with the public-private partnership arrangement here. This allows us the opportunity to do that. Assuming we're not taxing administration too greatly, we could ask them to, you know, look at that recommendation again and see if they would make any changes to that recommendation. As to our ability to handle multiple projects, I don't know, I'd leave that up to Jamie and the team, but we managed to get through the referendum, and it was hectic. But I suspect we could look at multiple things at once. I think it's just important, as Jeff said, as we look to move that public-private partnership, we need, and you stated, Mark, we need that plan. We need to be able to say, this is the plan.
Plus, did Point of Beginning ever not, ever look at a plan not including baseball and softball on campus? Because in 2015, that would have been the plan, correct?
Yes. Well, I shouldn't say yes. I'll let Jamie say something that is correct.
Okay.
Because there was plans at John Long as well, designs that were done at John Long as well, right?
Yep.
I mean, just as, I mean, as they're looking at their master plan too, I mean, the one that we have here has Point of Beginning has it on here, but if they weren't, you know, do they put discus where it is? Do they do some of the things that they do, knowing that they've got more of a platform?
Yes. So we didn't limit them, that's a really good question, I'm glad you asked that question. We did not limit them to say you need to move it over here and not move it over there. We did not limit them on that, saying baseball and softball may go here, the board will not approve this unless you move it. We didn't say that at all. Because what this has done with us, with us losing, you know, with the, because it used to be over here is where the building ended, and now you've extended it, and then you sloped it down, so they've lost, like, I think, I think the field used to start over here, and now you're losing like 30 yards, something like that. So it was already a smaller practice field, and so because they've lost that, we didn't think this was as prime real estate as a huge bunch of grass. And also realizing that, you know, well, you know, as we, as we move forward into the spring, and we start adding grass into these areas down here, that, you know, opposite of the entryways at the district office, that those green spaces will also, and it's not shown here, but it's basically, if you're coming in here, there's, there's one here, and there's one like over here, those will also be opportunities for green space for someone to go utilize it in some way. Obviously, it wouldn't be somebody hitting a baseball, but it could be people playing catch, it could be people doing football drills, it could be doing soccer drills, as long as you're not kicking towards 60. You'd be doing some various things in that way, because it's big enough space for other green grass. So we did not limit, saying we want field, we want field events over here. They tried looking at, what's the best way, usually people that are involved in one field events are involved in multiples, so then they're in that area and easily accessible somewhere in bleachers they could look over. Those are the things that they looked at.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then the recommendation before us, before us from administration is to approve the 2019 Athletic Facility Master Plan. Does it have such a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made, and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, the 2018-19 Third Quarter Budget Report.
All right, as we do each quarter, the administration brings this quarterly report tracking our expenditure budgets, and we highlight areas that have some activity that varies from the prior year. For the third quarter, we continue to highlight the capital budget, capital object budget in Fund X. Again, we made purchases of computer equipment much earlier than last year. Last year included a lot of purchases in the final quarter of the year, which certainly isn't going to be happening this year. Otherwise, we seem to be tracking on Fund, in Fund X, to be very close to on budget, with 52.5% compared to 52.7% of last year's expenditure spent in the third quarter, by the end of the third quarter. And in Fund 27, you can see that we are tracking to come under budget in terms of expenditures in Fund 27. Are there any questions on this report?
Any questions? All right, thanks, Topher. Item J, the Grafton Gladiators' requests.
So we have a request here from the Gladiators, and Mark Rowland is here representing the Gladiators. We have, we have yet to finalize a lease agreement with our attorneys to have that available at Zahn Field. Currently, Fusion works with, has that whole space with the, with the passing of the referendum and the construction that occurred at Kennedy. And as we redid the entryway for people for drop-off, the Gladiators, the space that they utilize has become so small that they aren't able to use it for youth football. And so they've been looking for another, another spot to be able to do that. We, we don't really have any other land available for that to be an ideal situation for them. Working with the Fusion and the Gladiators, we have a proposal in front of us to add a field on the west side of Zahn. Cara, do you have that for me?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I will, that's good. So I will talk while I'm sending it to you. So what we have is we have a proposal in front of us to have a shed at Zahn. The details of that have been shared with you. They're going to the town later. May 1st, that would go with it. It would, at Zahn Field, it would be to the north end of Zahn, and would still allow the, the Fusion would still have the other two practice fields that would be to the east of that area, as well as where the parking lot is, the fields that they've developed to the north of those. Those are, those would still all be Fusion soccer fields. They would have the one field, they would have a practice field, they would have portable lights that would be facing towards the wooded area, and then they'd be looking to build a shed that they currently have at Kennedy. That shed, they would probably be using the stuff out of there, maybe some storage, shelving and so forth.
Well, we'll be moving the shed and donating the shed to the school district.
Okay. So that would be something that the district, seeing with Jamie, would be beneficial for us to be able to utilize, of storing various equipment, as we now have two schools that are bigger, having storage for snow plowing or various things. Be able to have those opportunities will be beneficial for us in that way. And so there's, so there's one part that we'll be working on, a land lease that we'll be bringing forward to the board, but at this point, we're really looking at that shed. But at this point, we're really looking at that shed request for them, making sure that as the board is comfortable with what they're looking to put, where they're looking to put it, and, and what that would look like for them to be able to utilize it for our, our youth that are in the Gladiator program. All the way down, I think, to the last one. The colors of the shed, you can see variations of shed, but this is where, so you think up to the, to the west of, of Zahn is where the practice field is, you can see where those temporary lights are, and then where the storage shed would be for their use. They would not be utilizing the concession stand that currently Fusion utilizes. They have an agreement with Fusion to upgrade the, the water at their cost, which would help, there's no irrigation there, it's, it's well only. And they'd be working with them on the dumpster and all those different types of things.
So is that a new shed to be constructed on site? Okay.
Thirty by sixty-four. I see the thirty-six by sixty-four.
Let me scroll up one, then we'll have that.
So a new well?
There's an existing well there, we've already had it tested. We need to deliver 50 GPM, and it can deliver that. Grafton well has tested it for quality, it needs all state quality requirements. So we'll take that existing well, and that well was drilled in 1992, up more technology, so we'll be putting in a new pump, and a new storage tank, and just bring it up to 2019 technology. So it would constantly provide constant water flow instead of up and down, up and down, up and down. The irrigation company needs around 40 GPM, and so that we'll be able to supply and irrigate our field. And then if Fusion wants to tap off of it, they'll run along.
But once that would be attained, that 50 GPM, they would be able to tap into it and irrigate further to the east?
They could, whatever they want to do, I mean, it's, for us, irrigate our field is about twelve, to bring in irrigation, about $12,000. The well will cost us $15,000, but they need to tap off of that, and in the future they want to irrigate, you know, there's no order to do it, because our seasons are a little bit different in terms of what we do.
And then the power, I'm assuming you'll have power in the shed?
Yeah, we're getting close on that right now. There's a, it exists, I already talked to Lee Energies, we're hoping that we could tap off of what is there and deliver a 200 amp service to the shed. They have some terminology they use that allows you to do that, instead of bringing in a whole separate fee. We told Fusion that we would take over their electric bill, since we would use more of the electric than what they do, and they're okay with that. The shed would have emergency lights on the outside, that would be activated by sensors, and then just interior outlets and that sort of thing. There'll be a water line run from the well to the shed, and irrigation will take off from the shed into the field. The water will be used for, you know, for the kids to get water during practices.
Restroom facility?
Uh, we use Porter Jones, yep, and we have Arnold's that does that, just like we did at Kennedy. The same setup, we had a Kennedy, Advanced Disposal donates a disposal for us every year. And then we build it in August, and they pick it up in, when we're done with season, which is end of October, same with the Porter Jones.
So is the green space of the field, is that 120 by 50 then? What's the?
That's a football regulation field.
That's 120?
It's 120 by 53.
And then there'll just be practices only there then?
That's correct.
And with having this space, your big scrimmage, where would you still have that?
Uh, we need to talk to the town. Last year, it was a little bit overwhelming, the scrimmage we had there, we had a lot more people than we anticipated. So either we'll have it there, and a better game plan, I know there's been initial discussion for us moving it back to the school, depends on how much green space is available and that sort of thing. So it may be split between here and the school district. That's a big event for us, there's like a thousand kids that come there in football scrimmage. So we're in the planning, it'll either be half here, that there, or I'm still, I don't know if we can actually do that.
Ideally, we met right before break, and Jamie and I were meeting with Representative Gladiators, and Kevin Moore, and Jim Norris. Ideally, it'd be great to have that scrimmage on our facility, it just depends on what all that looks like with parking, where we are with all those pieces for them. That would be the ideal, to be able to bring it back to the high school campus. So that's what our plan is at this point, but a secondary piece would maybe be to have part of it there.
Jamie, if the new green space that you just outlined takes?
Yep.
We'd have to use some of that.
Yep. And then the only question, so as far as at Kennedy, then the lights that are there, so, do we know the plan with those, are they still have no use at this point?
Those lights were there before we were founded, that's.
Those are old.
Those things are old. The electrical service there, we upgraded, that's a brand new electrical service, so the school wants it, they can have it, that's a $6,000 electrical service. But the lights, we were just going to walk away from them. Although we use them, they, they've been there for decades.
I don't know the history of the lights, or they, will they?
They used to be a softball field.
I know it used to be a softball field, but the, did the district put them in, or did the village put them in?
I think the village, probably, I guess, did. I'm not sure. I wouldn't know, I would discuss it. They took, the outfield lights, they took down, you know, where the outfield, those lights are gone, so only the third base and first base lights.
Right. And the portable lights there would be generator?
Correct. The Grafton Gridiron Club has generously donated those to us, so, and they are used only about six weeks out of our football season, from mid-September through October, from about 5 o'clock to 7:30. Don't even use them when it gets too dark.
And is it relates to permitting? Gladiators would be responsible for the permitting, correct? I mean, any permits that would be associated with building well?
Yes, that's all through the tower of Grafton will issue all the building permits.
I'm just trying to think legally, and so they, so those would become leasehold improvements that would essentially belong to the district? Yes?
I did look at the current, the current contract that we have, we've had Jamie review the specs on all the things that they are suggesting before they go to the town, and he feels comfortable with that moving forward. I don't recall, off top my head, I don't know if you do, the, it's, any improvements that are made, I think the way it's written now, with the landscaping and things that Fusion did, those, those are not something that they, you know, that we reimburse them for.
Right.
If you're talking about a shed, or you're talking about something that's movable, that may be a different issue, meaning that's permanent, we wouldn't, the cost isn't on to us to reimburse in that way, but we could, that would be something we could write into the contract, that the board has a wish to make sure something's in that.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think through, okay, you know, from, from the legal perspective, we're the land, we are the owners of the land, the Gladiators will make improvements to those lands, and then there's a question of who owns those improvements? I mean, there's a question who pays for the improvements, but then who owns the improvements once they're, once they're there? So just as we look to work with legal to develop lease agreements, because I don't know what the Fusion agreements say right now. This gets back into the, what did that baseball field used to be called? It had a name, that softball field. Kennedy? I mean, so the village put those lights in there, but I don't think they ever intended anyone to pay, I mean, to reimburse them for those lights, and I believe those, those improvements belong to the district.
The way the, the way the lease is written for Fusion is that improvements that they make are part of the, the risks that they take on, on making those improvements.
But they, they belong to the district?
Correct, it's the district's land.
Yeah, okay.
I think we would want, if we build that shed and spend $100,000, if we want to move the shed down the road, we would want to move the shed.
That I would agree with, absolutely.
Them, them, them doing anything with the field or anything like that, or all those pieces, or things that go with it, yeah.
And we were actually thinking about moving the shed, but we decided to actually go out and build a new one.
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree with that, I'm just saying, anything that would be part, become part of the land.
Oh, yeah, we're kind of, yeah, the well.
The well, right, there wouldn't be something we'd be responsible, and that's how it's written now, is, is improvements that are made is sort of, because you're renting it for a dollar, then, you know, the improvements that you're making are, are in terms of that.
Any concerns, and I, I don't know, it's been a long time since my son's participated in the Gladiator program, but parking, ample parking, I mean, is?
This is only for practice.
Practice?
So we have like 30 coaches, and the parents will come in, drop off their kids, and a few parents stay around and watch practice, but after the initial excitement kind of wears off, they kind of don't show up anymore, so, yeah, there's ample parking. If we were to hold the scrimmage there, the farmer to the south would open up his entire field for us to park. So we worked with Lily again to use their parking lot, and then the whole south where the farmer is, he's a, he's a supporter of Gladiators. And that's a one-time event. Other than that, parking is a non-issue. And actually, it's better for us and the village, because right now, we're right in downtown Grafton, and, you know, dropping kids off and it's housing and that sort of thing. Here, we're totally away from everybody, relative to the neighbors and whatnot.
Any additional questions? I guess then you're looking for a motion to grant the use of this, of the space, and the details to be determined by virtue of a lease agreement to be negotiated, that was the other question that I had, was the elements, and this might be a question for legal, the elements that would pertain to how Gladiators and Fusion share spaces or cohabitate, or whatever you want to call it, is that, is that a district obligation, or is that just an agreement that exists between the Gladiators? I, I don't know the answer to that. Is that an agreement that exists between the Gladiators and Fusion, or is that something that the district needs to mediate or be involved with as it relates to lease agreements? Don't know, but would ask if you're looking into that.
Okay. Right now, we're in a good spot where they're working things out together, and that's, it sounds like a separate lease for that part of the field, and the rest of it is all the Fusion, so there's no confusion about that, but we can ask that question.
Okay. All right, so then I would entertain a motion to approve the administrative recommendation relative to the utilization of that space by the Grafton Gladiators.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, Mark. Student overnight trip requests.
Yes, we have two overnight trip requests for the board to approve. One is for, one of them that I mentioned in my superintendent's comment, the FBLA National Leadership Conference, where they are heading June 29th through July 3rd, and it's in San Antonio. You can notice that Sandy has noted that the male chaperone still needs to be determined, and typically in these situations, you're finding a male chaperone that's an FBLA leader, and they're helping you with your kids, and she's a female helping with their female kids, so they're still working on that. But it's for them to go to nationals, so we're asking for board approval for, for that trip.
All right, I have a motion to approve the student overnight trip request.
There's another one.
And then, yeah, I couldn't remember if I do both of them together, they do, do they approve both?
No, we do.
And the second is the band and choir trip to New Orleans, which is in 2020, so it's a year away. And looking ahead to March 21st through March 27th, the list of students has not been determined, but the itinerary through Bob Rogers' travel has been given to you to be able to review. And putting it out this far in advance allows students the opportunity to fundraise, to be able to reduce the cost, to be able to go on the trip.
All right, so entertain a motion to approve both overnight trip requests. Second. Second. Any discussion? The band trip is an annual or every other year?
Every other year trip, Mr. Manaty, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, and choir is, is, is this their first?
No, they went together last time.
They went together last time, too, okay. This is the second time they've gone together.
Okay. Any additional questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye. Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Gift reports.
We have one gift report that we would ask for the board approvals for tonight, which is from Ram Tool. It's an Acer 3VK1 milling machine, value estimated $5,000, as well as three boxes of carbide and mills of various sizes, estimation of 53, 35, 77. This is a restricted gift for our tech ed program, that we would ask the board to approve.
Motion to approve the gift.
So moved.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye. 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 Opposed? Certainly gratefully accept that gift. It is wonderful to see the partnership continue to grow with our area businesses and providing things that our students can work on to enhance their experiences, so thank you to Ram Tool.
And their, and their, you know, their partnership with us, with our consortium, with our small group, I mean, they're not only donating things to us, they're also having, you know, giving time to be able to come in and look at the curriculum that we're offering, and the things that we're doing, and making sure it meeting the needs for industry leaders as well. So they're a really great partner for us to have. We appreciate that.
All right, construction update.
Yes, so now that we're in the spring, we have, I think it was back in the winter that we'd said that we would hold off on construction updates, until now we get into spring. So we had some work that was done over spring break, I wanted to update the board on, as well, this will be a standing item now as we move into the rest of the year, and looking at some of the construction pieces that go with us finalizing the referendum.
Yes, so some, during spring break, it was a short week, but we were able to get a lot of projects done, so I will just list some of the projects. So at the high school, we replaced ceiling systems on 17 classrooms, installed carpeting on another 11 classrooms. Throughout the district, we installed window treatment, and this was part of the safety grant. Finished a safety glass throughout the district was part of the safety grant also. Started to repaint the high school office, upgraded the high school PA system, installed two hot water heaters in a district building. Finished up the outside exit doors, the signage throughout the district. Both elementaries, we worked with JCI to replace some defective controllers that we have an issues with under warranty. At the high school, we were able to fill the new chilled water system. And then worked with Hoffman and many contractors to try to finish off the punch list. And I just, board, I just want to thank the custodial staff for giving up their family time during this, you know, winter, spring break. Also, want to thank IT department, they were able to come in and put back all the, you know, computer labs, have it ready for school, and they helped me with the PA systems at the high school. So update on landscaping west of the high school and parking lots. Right now, it's scheduled, it looks like it's scheduled to start at the end of May. And typically, the asphalt plants open up May 15th, that's very typical. However, if we get a week with the last, like, temperatures that we had the last two days, that, that timeline can easily move up. But right now, it's end of May, so you're going to go well into June before that. So they're gonna, what they're gonna, going to do is finish the parking lots first, and then landscape second. All right, moving into some of the summer projects, this is All right, moving into some of the summer projects, this is preliminary summer projects. So right now, at John Long Middle School, it's going to get probably most of our attention this year. So we're going to replace the exterior windows at John Long Middle School, add electrical to classrooms, replace classroom unit ventilators, repair and seal coat the south parking lot, replace ceiling systems at John Long Middle School, resurface both gymnasiums, and they will also get an upgrade of the clock system and PA system like the rest of the district did. Right now, Woodview Kennedy, resurface both gymnasiums, replace all plumbing fixtures that wasn't, that were not replaced during the referendum in the classrooms. And at Woodview, the south parking lot will be repaired and seal coated. The high school, the main varsity gymnasium will be sanded and refinished. We are going to resurface the JV gymnasium, replace door number six, and then we are going to re-carpet 18 classrooms, install ceiling systems in another 12 classrooms. And then the swimming pool will be drained this year again, because we needed to fill it very quickly after construction, so we need to drain it, replace the sand filters, acid wash the base, replace some tile in the swimming pool, so that will happen over summertime. And then also, the east parking lot and south parking lot will be repaired and then seal coated also. So, in conclusion, Mr. Nelson and I gave a tour to a Grafton resident that had concerns with construction. So during the tour, we were both able to answer the majority of his questions, and there were some code issues that, that he brought up, and I am working, currently working with Hoffman right now to resolve those.
All right, Jamie, any questions for Jamie?
Sir, go ahead.
You said resurfacing elementary school gyms, do you?
That's correct. Yes, so typically, it's every other year, because the usage, however, they're new gymnasiums, so the first three years just to build up the code.
Is there more grading work being done out there, or is this one?
No, it's grading, and then they have to add topsoil. But they would prefer to do that after the curbing, everything's already in.
I'm assuming these, some of these projects are a mix of referendum and district funded?
That is correct.
Okay, I would ask if we could get a list of these, and then a breakdown between the source of funding for each. Yeah, I think that would, that would be helpful.
I think the project with summer school is not an issue at John Long.
That is correct, yes. We're utilizing the west end of John Long.
Now that we have, now that we have air conditioning at our elementary schools, we can utilize Woodview. So we haven't been able to utilize our elementarys in the past because of the no air conditioning. And last year, you know, we, without all the construction, well, that couldn't be there anyways. But now, heavily used part of John Long, but still accomplish all the things that we need to do. Laura Stiles has been working with the teachers and Shereen Mortake to have that ready and able to be able to utilize on that line. Last year, you know, Grace, is it Grace? Grace was, you know, huge benefit to us, like all of our community members helped us with just trying to have people in various places during summer school, and we'd be in a better spot this year.
Any additional questions for Jamie? If not, then I'd like to personally, on behalf of the board, thank Jamie for, you know, the tremendous effort that he has put in these past couple of years, and the diligence and the care that he provides for our spaces. Just absolutely remarkable, wonderful on behalf of the kids. But, so thank you very much for your time, and for your efforts, and for your commitment. And as well, for the IT staff and your custodial staff, and the maintenance staff, and anyone else who is here over that spring break time period. It is much appreciated, so thank you very much, Jamie. Okay, then we will move, the Board of Education will convene into closed session to consider final notice of non-renewal of teaching contracts, consider teacher contracts and employee compensation, consider performance-related data the superintendent, and conduct public business in which competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 1985-1, sub C, E, and F. So I have a motion to adjourn into close.
So moved. Second.
John, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, 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 and yes, so thank you very much.